I'd like to call to order the Board of Education Budget Committee meeting. It is Tuesday, it's Thursday, February 14th. We're at the Nashua High School North Boardroom. Mr. Mosher?
Yes?
Mr. Mosher is joining us by telephone as he recuperates. Are you by yourself, Mr. Mosher?
I certainly am.
Thank you. Mrs. Oden?
Here.
Ms. Timmons?
Here.
Ms. Raymond?
Here.
Sorry, here.
Ms. Porter?
Here.
Mr. Garino is here. Others present, Dr. Mosley, Mr. Donovan?
Here.
And we also have other individuals from the transportation and CTE and plan operations with us and for their presentations for tonight's budget meeting. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Donovan.
Okay, good evening. I passed out your package and I'll just run through those things quickly before I turn it over to Mr. Rossio. So once again, here's the new table of contents. The items in yellow are the items you should have in your packet. So just quickly, we'll run through them. The beginning, the first thing is that's all our teachers and what schools they're in and sort of what grouping they're in, so their type, so classroom or special ed teacher, et cetera. So that gives you a sense of how the teachers are all broken up. The next one is the same thing for Paris. The third one, 2C, is the breakout, our guidance counselor staffing. So we break it out by school. We give you what the standard for the state is and then we give you what our standards are. So we're above minimum standards. Many people would suggest we should be higher than that, but at this, we are at least above minimum standards. So that is 2C. 2D is the administrator ratio, basically comparing the students at each of the schools. We also list if there's intensive needs or preschool classrooms and the number of administrators at each school with a ratio. Then there's the custodians by location and type. So all those things are pretty straightforward. Then this is sort of the Bible of FTEs, this next sheet, 2G. This you'll find in the city budget book each year. It's usually the first page in each of the department's budgets. And it lists each one of our positions, how many FTEs we have, and then the total dollars associated with that. So you can see down at the bottom that the total labor to pay all this staff is $84,139. And then we also subtotal it by union group.
Dan?
Yes?
Sorry, Mr. Donovan. Is this $84 million including benefits or not including benefits?
It does not include benefits. It's just salary.
Thank you.
Okay, and then this next sheet, it's got, you'll notice it has two, it's got 7A/9H. This is the sheet that Mr. Chopra thought he had with him last week that he didn't. So it's part of his presentation.
I don't have that. We don't have that.
It's in the back, the very back, behind the other presentation items. Okay? You got it?
Yeah. Should...
It was right before...
The way the package was put together, the items I just went over are in the front. And then there's the transportation presentation, the plan ops, and CTE, and it was behind that. There were three pages behind that.
Okay, I got it.
Okay, so that's the ELL teacher-to-student ratios. As I had mentioned, that's part of Mr. Chopra's and it's also, it's also going to be discussed in the CTE discussion tonight. Then 10A, this is our elementary enrollment. Basically, it's a two sets. The top set of numbers is where we are today with the number of students at each school, the number of teachers at each school, and then we do the simple calculation to come up with the class size. And then just below that is what we would expect to see next year as of this point in And then 11A is the official October head count. You have probably seen this before in one of your board packages. And this is our total student population in the district this year as of October 1st. And then the final 112D is basically looking at what our actual costs are by line item, what they were for fiscal year '16, '17, and '18. So those are the actual costs for each of those last three years. Obviously, we're in fiscal year '19 now, so there's no final numbers yet. And then what we're discussing is the budget for fiscal year '20. So this just gives you a sense, and you can, you know, take a look and you'll see some go up and down a bit. A lot of them are pretty much stable. Okay, other than that, each of the presenters tonight will go through their packages. So I will turn the microphone over to Mr. Dave Rossio, our transportation director.
Good evening, folks. My name is Dave Rossio, Transportation Director for the district. I'd like to thank you guys for having me here on my second straight Valentine's Day with you. Just so you know, next year Valentine's Day is on a Friday, so I hope you guys have something special planned. Put together just a little presentation on what we do in the transportation department, similar to what some of you may have seen from last year. Little bit of a... Hold on one second. So currently running 53 regular education buses, 35 special ed buses, transporting 7,500 students daily, and in all, provide over 2 million rides a year. Those are my budget lines. You can see the increase year over year is a 3% increase. Currently in negotiations right now with First on an extension. We have not added anything to this budget. Where we go, provide transportation to the 17 district schools, the Brentwood Program, Clearway, four Catholic schools, and two charter schools in Nashua. Who we transport, elementary students that live more than a mile from the school, middle and high school students more than two miles from the school, students who are in transition and require transportation to their home school, and students who have transportation requirement in their IEP. Additional things provided, high school shuttles, late buses, voc-ed buses, and we run a lot of buses in summer school for ELL Sped and Power Scholars. Just some terms we use. A route is a complete route. So when I say we ran 53 buses, it's 53 big routes. A route is made up of three runs, typically a high school, a middle school, and elementary. A tier would be the timing of all those. So all the high schools is considered our first tier because they all run together. The middle schools, a second tier. The elementary is a third tier. So you can sort of see that here with the school times. The green is all our tier-one schools. Tier-two is in the red, and tier-three is the blue schools. One of the challenging aspects of what we're going through now is the out-of-district transportation. We transported a number of schools, a number of students to special ed schools outside the district. Here's a sample of them here. We also transport kids from numerous communities to Nashua that could be in foster care, could be homeless. We've got kids, and it's an ever-changing list. These kids may go out of the city for two weeks, then come back, go back out to a different address. We've got kids in Hudson, Derry, Pepperell, Mass., Manchester, Hollis, and that's just off the top of my head, some of the ones we're transporting as of today. Vendors, first student, does all of our busing in district, special ed, and regular. Outside contractors, Durham School Bus Company, Carrying Hands, and North Reading Transportation are commonly used for the kids going outside the district. We are currently in the midst of a nationwide school bus driver shortage. It hits home. You'll see it on the news, you'll see it in, you know, the Midwest, Out West, and you see it here certainly. It's very difficult to recruit and retain drivers. This here is a letter that I got my hands on September 14th, this past September, from the Bedford Middle School Athletic Director, essentially saying that all the buses for fall athletics are canceled until further notice. They could not come up with enough drivers to support their middle school athletic program. So it's in this area. It happens. We fight it daily, but we haven't missed trips due to it. We run late sometimes, but it is an ongoing issue. Bus tickets, it's not mandated for the high school, therefore, we can charge a bus fee. It's currently $65 for the year. You can purchase a half-year ticket for $32.50. The students on the free or reduced lunch receive a free or reduced pass. Currently, just over 2,200 ticket holders. Manchester currently charges $360 a year. Westford's at $275. And then there's some school districts that we called around, don't charge anything. So it's sort of all over the map. So some challenges that we face, I mentioned the driver shortage, district-wide sped programs. So this, just to give you an idea of what I'm talking about, maybe you may have a student that lives by Main Dunstable, but he's actually in a special ed program at Charlotte Ave. That's not easy to route. It can be quite a long ride, whereas, you know, the regular bus runs, they could just do the school's local neighborhood. The district-wide sped programs are going to all four corners of the city. Pre-K is especially tough. They're our youngest, most vulnerable kids. They are also spread out all through the city. A lot of those kids do not go to and from their home address. They may be using one of the daycares in town. The charter schools that we service, they're difficult in the fact that their school day is different, so they don't fit neatly into our tiers. They are also growing ASD as quite the number of students this year. In fact, I did a redesign last year and had to, I was able to take two runs out of Fairgrounds Middle School, but I had to add one over to ASD. And as I mentioned earlier, the transitional students, trying to react to that quickly, get them so they're not missing school when they ended up maybe in Manchester or Derry, it's tough to find drivers or available vehicles to handle that. Areas of opportunity, we're looking at doing a ticket purchase online now. Right now, we're either doing it by mail or in person. It would be nice to be able to move that online. At some point, we could use a software upgrade. I use an edulog transportation system that the district got in 1999. We've had some upgrades to it. There are some more available, more current upgrades that would be nice. And Operation Safe Stop is something that we participated in last year in the spring. The police were out, and we had checkpoints, and police were following school buses, trying to get people aware that they have to stop for a school bus. And it's amazing how many people actually don't know that. And the police feedback is that people were not doing it intentionally. They really didn't know that they had to stop. So when we, currently ongoing collaboration with law enforcement, trying to keep that going and give them hotspots where things may happen more often, so they can keep an eye out. And the last slide here is, I'm sure you folks over the years have gotten some phone calls about ice and snow coming off the bus on the highways. First student purchased this snow scraper here. Spent a lot of money on it. It's been a lot safer for the drivers trying to clean off their vehicles, and it's been safer for the communities. It just started this winter, our first storm, and it's really been a terrific thing that they invested in. And that's all I've got.
Thank you, Mr. Rossio. I'm going to go to Ms. Timmons, and then I'm going to go to Mr. Mosher, because I usually go to him first. Go ahead, Ms. Timmons.
Oh, well, you can go to Mr. Mosher if you want to.
Okay, I'll go to Mr. Mosher first, and then I'll go to Ms. Timmons. Mr. Mosher, do you have any comments or questions?
I never realized that we had so many routes and had to service so many schools. You know, it's amazing the amount of work that goes into this that... And if you could repeat for me the list of schools that they service, that would be very helpful for me when I have to explain it to one of the constituents why it costs so much for the transportation.
So that was the, all the district schools, the two charter schools, and the four Catholic schools.
And Catholic schools?
Yep.
Very good.
Okay.
How many, are they Catholic schools? How many students do you usually service on that? Do you know?
Nashua Catholic, roughly, I'm going to say about 170 off the top of my head. Infant Jesus, 50-ish, and a little bit more for St. Chris. Bishop Gerton is lightly traveled.
Uh-huh. Okay, that's a good, that's a good number. Thank you. That's very helpful.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Timmons.
Okay, my question regarding free and reduced lunches. When children are not on free or reduced lunches, but they have multiple children in school, do they get a discount?
They do not.
They do not? Wow, okay. That's one of the questions. And the other question, is that the only ice scraper that you have for your buses? How many did you purchase? One?
Just one.
Okay.
And just because the first student, the contractor, purchased it. I just wanted to show you folks. They are one of the first school bus companies to have it in this area. A lot of the trucking companies have been doing it. They pushed hard to do it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Ms. Raymond?
Thank you. I have a lot. So on the second slide there, you said the budget increases 3%, and you're working on an extension. When is the contract up? Like, when do we have to renegotiate that?
We're doing it. It's ongoing. It's up at the end of the school year.
Okay. And so, do you have any confidence that it will remain at 3% for this next budget year?
I do.
Okay. I'm going to write that down, sorry. And then regarding students who live within that two-mile distance requirement, are families able to purchase a pass at like a higher rate if they live within that area?
Generally not, because we don't have buses running through that area.
Okay.
If they're close enough, they can walk back. So you're talking, so maybe just lives just inside that two-mile boundary?
Right, I'm thinking like of my house, for example. I think I'm like 1.8 miles or 2.8. I'm like right on the edge. I assume my kids will have to hoof it.
If you are close enough to walk back to an existing stop, and we have room on that bus, we'll let you do that.
Okay. At the regular rate, there's not a...
Regular rate.
Interesting, okay. And then regarding all of these other schools that we're providing transportation to, is that a state law? Like, I guess I'm confused as to why, why we're required to drive all of these private school kids and frankly, charter school kids all over the place.
In New Hampshire, you have to provide those schools the same service as you provide the public schools.
Do they pay us for that service?
They do not.
I guess, why not? Is that just the law?
It is.
Huh. That's nice for them.
And charter school, if it's in the city? Like ASD used to be in Merrimack, so we didn't have to provide any transportation. Then they moved to Nashua. So all the Nashua kids, we provide transportation to ASD.
Gotcha. But all the Catholic and private schools get busing from us for free, is what I'm hearing?
Yes, correct.
Oh, that's a nice gift from the taxpayers. And I think that was, that was my last one. Do we have any idea, and maybe you don't, how much ASD is continuing to grow? Like, will we need to add routes for that?
I don't know. I can check. They do have a charter number, and I'm not sure where they are on it, if they're close to their cap or not.
Okay.
Yeah, I think they're close to their cap, but the question is, they have a lottery.
Right.
So if the Nashua kids are lucky at the lottery, let's say, then the number might go up.
Okay. And then the last question I had was about Operation Safe Stop. I think I forwarded you an email...
Yep.
...from one of our older people who's really worried about, her constituents are worried about Pine Hill Road and, what is that other one? Coburn? Is it Coburn with the farm and stuff? And people passing and not paying attention. Is there anything that we can do at our level or, you know, in conjunction with other people to help? Because I've heard from some of those parents too, especially at Pine Hill Road. They've got signs up now that say like, "Drive like your kids live here" and stuff if you drive down there. Is there anything else that we could do to help with that?
No, it's really just a public awareness campaign. I'm going to try and work with the highway department and see if we can move some of those rolling signs they have, you know, when you see a detour and that, and put them in some hotspots and just say, you know, "Stop the school buses," that type of thing. And again, I've sent over some bus stops over to the police, like we've had an issue here, like Pine Hill.
Yeah.
I know they went out there. It's really just an awareness. The New Hampshire School Transportation Association is actually working with the Drivers' Ed Association to push this, because it's never been pushed in drivers' ed training. So they're actually, yeah. So a lot of young drivers don't even know it. So they're actually looking to change some of those manuals. They've actually been working with some of the insurance companies too, who sponsor some of that stuff.
Wow. It just blows my mind that people don't know that you need to stop for a school bus, you know, because, you know, kids are in the road.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else have any? Ms. Porter?
First of all, great job. I don't know how you do it.
Thank you.
This is a lot to coordinate. Do we charge parking fees for the high school kids?
Yes.
And where does that, does that go into the transportation fund? Where does that go?
No, that goes into, I think it's the same general fund for the city.
It goes to the city, okay. And regarding software, I don't know where I heard this in a meeting or something. There's some software that would text parents to let them know when the bus is on time or late.
There is.
Okay.
Again, that would be one of the upgrades that we would need.
Would that, that upgrade would come with the edulog that you have? It would have that functionality, so you wouldn't have to change software? You would just have to...
Correct. We'd get an upgraded service from them.
How much would that cost?
I'd have to get a quote on it. There's different packages, almost like buying a car, and how much you want. So to get you a quote on that, the other thing that they had was the parent notification is also gives more functionality to schools to be able to go in and change an address right there and give them a bus ticket, so...
So do most districts have that, or is that...
They get more and more, where people are able to do it on an app, you know, getting a notification.
So that would be increased safety for kids, because parents would be, would know sooner where their child is. It would be more efficient, I would expect, in your office and calling to track down a child?
Yeah, so the other part of that is this whole interface. So you're going to be interfacing the GPS. That would also allow me to see buses, one live from my computer. So if someone calls me and says, "Where's 407?" I can tell them within two minutes where it is. I can also go back with the upgrade the next day, and maybe bus 402 is making a stop that's not a stop.
Mm-hmm.
I can see that. Or is driving by a stop that I have listed, because maybe that student, mom's driving?
Right.
And I can see that too. So there's a lot of functionality that we could get with some upgrades.
So is that upgrade included in your, in the 3%?
Again, so it's all what you put in a package?
So are we, are you planning on getting an upgrade next year? Because you're saying your budget is going up 3%.
Right. So no, I did not, there's nothing in there for next year. I just put it as an area of opportunity. At some point, I'd like to put it in.
Okay, but it's, but it's not in the request that you have?
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Raymond?
Sorry, I forgot one. Regarding cameras, are there cameras on the buses now?
There are.
Okay, and those face towards the students?
They face towards the students. Some of the buses have them facing both ways.
Okay. And who has access to that and for those feeds?
First student management, myself, and administration.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
I just have, I guess, a couple of comments, not really questions, but I'm looking at the incredible amount of money it costs to, to transport 15 students. I'm not begrudging anyone access to special education, but we're paying $38,800 a year to, you know, to bus kids to Arlington, Massachusetts, Rochester, Rye, across the state and into Massachusetts. So it's kind of like an unfunded mandate. I mean, I would, I would hope that the state, I hope that Concord would give, should be given districts some, some help in this area. I'm not saying we shouldn't do it by any means, but I'm saying the state should be giving us more help. And also, the other unfunded mandate to bus kids to Catholic schools, and I'm Catholic, but I don't think we should bus kids to Catholic schools. You know, not, no, that should be public, that's, those are, it's a public school system, as well as other private schools. And my third, I guess my third comment is about safe routes to schools. And I know it's kind of difficult for parents to get their kids out of buses and to walk to school, but I think we need, I would hope that principals of our schools, whether, elementary, even, even, safe routes to school is for elementary and middle school, but even high school would, it's a state program, would try to get onto the safe routes to school program to get more kids walking and out of buses. Would save them money, and it would get our kids exercising more. So those are my comments. Thank you very much for your presentation.
You're welcome.
Does anyone else have any comments or questions? Ms. Oden?
Thank you. I just want to clarify something that Mr. Garino brought up in the out-of-district transportation. That $581,950, is that for 15 students?
No.
Or is that for the entire list?
That's, I believe the number I had, it was 53 students.
Okay.
I apologize.
No problem.
Okay. Because I...
What, this is 53?
Are you saying that 15 should be 53?
Hold on.
No. With all the other ones, Lighthouse Valley Collaborative, plus the 15, so it'd be 53 plus 15?
Yes.
68?
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
The 53 is pretty stable. The 15 goes up and down.
Mm-hmm. And that's mandated by the court, I believe? Yes. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Take care.
Thank you, Mr. Rossio.
You're welcome.
And happy Valentine's Day, and I'm glad you won't be here next year for Valentine's Day. Enjoy.
Thank you. Take care.
I'm going to turn the floor over to, are you all set?
I think we're ready.
Yep, we're all set.
All right, to Ms. Bastoni and Mr. McQuilkin.
McQuilkin, yes.
Did I say that wrong? I'm sorry.
It was close enough.
You want to introduce yourself?
Sure. So my name is Mike McQuilkin, and I'm the NTC Director for Nashua South.
And I'm Amanda Bastoni, and I'm the CTE Director for Nashua North. Okay, now that's who we are. Okay. Should I move this since I'm being interviewed? So, Happy Valentine's Day, everybody. We want to start by, you have in your packet... We want to start by, you have in your packet our five goals. And we want to start with those because they're part of the Perkins Grant. So for the Perkins Grant, and it's Appendix B, just so everybody knows if you want to follow along. So for the Perkins Grant, we have to write an executive summary, executive statement. And we created five goals, and we did this, our goals were created because research tells us that if you want to make sustainable, positive change, you need to focus on three things. Recognizing and esteeming diversity, very important. Building community and supporting teachers. So we're really hopeful that you'll see those in our goals. And so now we're going to share our goals with you. I'll start with the first two, and then Mike will share the next three. So, our first goal at the NTC is to increase and improve awareness at the school district, local community, state, and national levels. And to do this, we're going to develop strategies around how we are perceived and marketed. So you should have in your packet one of our new brochures.
Nice.
Yeah.
Very nice.
And what's important about this is they have a new logo that you see down at the bottom. We created a new mission and vision statement, and we also have the new brochure. The brochure was created by a teacher-led marketing committee. So I think it's really important to stress that teachers got together, they wanted this to happen, and they created it. The third, the next thing I want to highlight is that our auto program has been doing significantly, really well. We've partnered with Tully Automotive and with Peters, Honda of Peters, and many of the other dealers. They've reached out to us, they want to be on our board, they want to have our students come do internships. So the auto program is really spreading throughout the community. And I think that's important, because Nashua has a large dealership and automotive population. So we're really excited about that. And then the last one I kind of wanted to highlight for this goal is that we've been researching how to develop and increase our relationship with JROTC. They may come under CTE, as well as creating a new program around protective services. So we've had two advisory meetings already around protective services. We've met with the Chief of Police in Nashua. We've met with the emergency management team. You met Justin Cates the other, the other night. Also Corrections has partnered with us. So we're moving in the direction of creating a wonderful protective services program. So those are the ways we're, just three of the ways we're achieving our first goal. So our next goal is to improve and increase access for all students. This is really important to us at the NTC. It's very important that we reach non-traditional students and special populations. To do this, we want to strengthen our relationships with guidance counselors and make sure that our programs mirror those populations of the district at large. It's extremely important to us. So I want to share three ways we've been doing that recently. And I think Mike and I agree that as CTE Directors, we're uniquely positioned to really create programs that reach all students. So we have the ability to reach out to ELL students, as we mentioned. So the ways we've been doing that is, number one, we, we have our safety protocol, and we've had that translated into Spanish and Swahili. So I think that's really exciting. And we've been going down to the middle schools and, and middle schools and the high schools, all the ELL parent nights. We've been outreach to all the parents. In fact, at the last middle school night, our words were translated into Spanish, Portuguese, and two dialects from Africa. So it was really exciting to, to work with ELL populations in that way. And then the last goal that I want to highlight for you that we've been achieving is, we've designed two new courses. One is the seat, Intro to CTE. This course is designed to move slowly, focus on safety and vocabulary. It's currently the enrollment out of 19 students. 15 are ELL, and four are special population, special ed students. So what it does is it allows us to move slowly, focus on safety and vocabulary, and really make sure all of our students are aware of the opportunities in CTE. And then we've also piloted, next year we'll pilot a new baking course. It's a one-year baking course. That came out of a demand from students. And this too will move slowly, focus on vocabulary, and is targeted at many of our ELL populations. So really trying to outreach to all students. Now, I'm going to shift the mic over to Michael. Oh, yeah, and that's a picture of our girls. Those are some of the students that we have.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So our next goal. There we go. So our next goal is to increase and improve unity between the two Nashua schools, Region 16 and the Nashua School District. And this involved also vertical alignment with the middle schools and the elementary schools. So some of the evidence included, we've had two Region 16 meetings with our area schools. One of these meetings was hosted by the NTC. And these are great opportunities to reestablish relationships with our region and sending schools. We also met with guidance teams at both high schools to share information about programs and create a common understanding of our programs. We also started phases of vertical alignment. We met with the tech ed teachers, fax teachers, guidance, and leadership teams at all three middle schools. We also had high school student presentations at all three middle schools. Including in Elm Street, we did a presentation for 60 ELL students. Yep. Lastly, in terms of vertical alignment, we're currently giving virtual tours of our CTE programs with the middle schools. And this is led by a video productions teacher. Where one teacher is actually over at South, giving the virtual tour, and the students are in an auditorium in their middle school, answering questions back and forth, which is pretty cool, so we look to expand that program.
Yeah, I don't know if that's being done anywhere else.
And lastly, for goal number three, we're collaborating with Power Scholars to create a summer CTE experience for middle school students. Our next goal is to increase improvement in enrollment in both CTE courses and our FITA courses in the NTC. And to achieve this goal, we're going to examine student retention rates and develop initiatives to examine the intricacies of student involvement in the NTC. Some evidence of this, on November 13th, we shared our NTC Trifold and FITA Course information during our eighth and ninth grade student presentations for Girls in Technology. This was an event held at Nashua North. We had 100 total girls from all three middle schools participate in this, a great event. Other evidence includes our Robot Algebra course for incoming ninth graders. Also, in January, we hosted a Robot Algebra 1 launch party with the Commissioner, several superintendents, and math teachers across the state. There's an article in your packet that explains this event. Other interdisciplinary work includes collaboration with the Social Studies Department using career pathway surveys and touring of our NTC programs. We also have an ambassador program in our CTE center. All programs have student ambassadors to assist with promoting our programs. Our student ambassadors presented to the middle schools, as well as the entire sophomore class at both North and South during our CTE showcase back in, down in December. During the showcase, all programs were presented to sophomores, and each sophomore then picked two CTE areas to visit during an E Block session. Our last goal is to increase improvement, increase and improve the empowerment of NTC teachers. To achieve this goal, we're going to work closely with teams and individuals to ensure that all NTC teachers feel supported and encouraged as professionals in their fields. This picture up on the board is from our Meals Matter program. And there's also an article about this in your packet. Two of our teachers served as mentors for this program for a group of three students. And this program involves giving financial assistance to those in need to purchase lunches. It's a fantastic program. At the start of the year, Amanda and I also met with each and every teacher in the NTC in order for both of us to learn about each teacher's vision and goals for the school year. That would be very important to set the tone. We also have a teacher-led marketing committee for both North and South, a joint committee to promote the NTC. We wrote grant funding for over $35,000 for us CTE teachers to have professional development. Our Foods Technology teacher has continued the greenhouse initiative that she started last year that was built by our CTE programs. Next month, our HVAC teacher and his students will be putting in a heating system for the greenhouse. Our drone teacher is getting FAA and FEMA trained. A New Hampshire National Guard visit to our engineering program was initiated by our engineering teacher. Two of our video production, two of our video production students are going to be doing internships at BAE, and this was also initiated by a teacher in our engineering program. We also have teacher-led CTSOs, including Skills, DECA, and TSA.
Okay, so before we kind of go over the numbers, we want to make sure that, we remind you that last year you helped us by supporting manufacturing and machining getting started. And also, because of the board, we were able to increase the preschool director's salary. So we just want to start by thanking you for your support. It helped us achieve the great things that we've talked about. And we also want to thank the central office staff, especially Dana and Dan, who really helped us achieve those goals. So here is how we would like to partner with the board and with the city to keep our goals moving forward. So what we need, we, Mike and I discussed this, and we would like to see two additional para educators. We currently have three, no, we have, yeah, two paras over at South, and then we have one para educator in CTE over at North. And these paras have been instrumental in making sure that there's an extra set of eyes in some of our more, could potentially be dangerous classrooms. So we would love to see an additional para at North and an additional para at South added to our budget. We would also like to see, it says part-time up there, but we'd like to see a full-time work-based learning ELO coordinator, a part-time tech ed coordinator, or tech ed teacher. We currently have a part-time tech ed teacher. We'd like to make him full-time, so we can continue more of those CTE intro classes that we talked about at both North and South. We would like your support in exploring protective services and JROTC. And we would also like to develop a plan for the preschool. We're hoping that we could develop a plan that would allow us to generate more revenue and have the preschool be more active in creating funds to help support the NTC. So the cost that we're looking at for two paras is around $30,000. For the work-based learning coordinator, that would actually be, this must be an old slide. Sorry, everyone. It would be $50,000 for the work-based learning coordinator, $25,000 for the part-time tech ed, and then $3,500 for the preschool program, and it would cost you nothing to support us. Can I see your slide? So total, and you should have this on your actual slides. So total of 50, 80, this is not right, I don't know why, guys, so I'm sorry about that. The total, would, from the total, here's what I'd like to do. We would subtract the one full-time work-based learning coordinator and the part-time tech ed cor- teacher. So that money could actually come from Perkins. So all we're really looking for you to help us fund is the two paras and the $3,500 for the preschool program. So I'm sorry that this slide is not accurate. I apologize. Yes?
I'm sorry. I was just going to say on what we have in our packet, the work-based learning one is 40, listing at 40,000.
Good. So, thank you, Donnie. So the packet that you have in front of you is correct. So the total there would be $98,500. From that, we would subtract, as I said, the part-time tech ed and the full-time work-based learning coordinator, which would leave us asking the budget to increase by $33,500. So, I think that's it.
Yep.
That's our, so now we are open for questions.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to go to Mr. Mosher first for questions and comments.
Thank you. Yeah, you know, I was sitting here and I was thinking about the, the CTE courses. And I'm a great believer in these. I love the, the fact that our television production has been working so well. I remember a number of years ago when I was doing the same thing at NYU. And I had a lot of fun and I learned a lot in doing the television production. And I also was thinking about our hospitality industry and, you know, the, the, the students that are involved in that. And I had an idea. I said, one of these schools, schools that I have read about, they have a thing where certain days of the week, they, they open for the public for lunches or for breakfasts or dinners. And I thought, maybe we could do something like that with our students who are being cooks and service and being involved in the hospitality industry. And I was also thinking about a course in international cuisine, where certain students who would be interested in learning about the cooking techniques in Germany or France or England or, you know, some of the, the other European countries, where they would make some of the national dishes that are available there. And, you know, I'd use that as part of their experience in, in the hospitality industry and looking for places in more ethnic applications of the different cuisines. So I, you know, there are a lot of things that go through my mind when I listen to the CTE, the auto people with the automobiles, that they could bring in the automobiles and have a problem with it, and have it diagnosed and repaired by the students under the direction of the, of the, the current supervisors. You know, this is another great thing where people learn an awful lot. This is something that I think it'd be very valuable in looking to gain extra credits for what, what they're doing. But I think that, you know, by and large, we have so much talent in the schools with the students and so many talents with the, with the instructors, that, that any number of things that could be done, it's just a matter of doing it. So, yeah, that's it, my piece.
Hey, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mosher. Sure, sure, go ahead.
Okay, so I can answer one of the pieces there in terms of cultural, cultural foods. So in our Family and Consumer Science classes, one of our courses is Exploring Contemporary Cooking. And I know the teacher works and does integrative work with our social studies classes to look at different cultures around the world. And so we are looking for them to do some more work and, and, you know, work with the culinary department to sort of, you know, expose all students to those type of cultures and those types of foods. So that is something we're looking into.
And we also wanted to just add that one of our new initiatives, so the baking course that we talked to you about, is in partner with the Food Services in the district. So we are actually opening the cafe in the morning. It's open for students, and by working with the Food Services, it's open and available for students free and reduced lunch as well. And what that allows us to do is our baking students will then provide the baked goods for the cafe once it starts next year. And Food Services has guaranteed to buy all the baked goods that they create, and then we'll sell it to the students. And currently, we're just doing a soft opening. We have hot chocolate, we have coffee for adults only. And we have waters and, and different available items. We're trying to just kind of build excitement about it. And then next year, when the baking course takes off, we'll start to provide that, that service as well, so students can have that experience, Mr. Mosher, with hospitality, providing services, being open, opening the cafe. Actually, Dr. Mosley wanted the cafe open more frequently when he hired us, so that was one of his ideas.
When I worked in Brattleboro, we actually had something very similar. We had like a restaurant, cafe. So I thought the kids did a really nice job with hotel resume, hotel restaurant management skills, those soft skills you learn, whether it's greeting people or servicing people or just learning how to work together as a team in terms of facilitating the creation of a meal and subsequently concluding it. So I, that's where I got the original idea from.
And then as far as our auto program, we have been taking cars in and assessing them. Our auto teacher is brand new. He's wonderful, Mr. Smith, but starting, you know, we're just getting him on his feet. But he has already taken, I know we have community members who've reached out, and they have brought their cars in to be assessed. We had a para at one of the We had a para at one of the elementary schools who needed her car repaired or at least looked at. She was able to bring it in and get a free assessment. So we're slowly starting to build that. The hope, as they do in Salem, is that we would get a, there's a machine that you have to have in order to do inspections.
Inspections.
Yeah, and the goal would be for us to have that machine so that we could do inspections, and that would generate a lot of revenue. And it would teach the students a lot of important skills as they check the headlights and the windshield wipers and go through the list of requirements. So that's the direction we're hoping to go in.
All right, great. I'm going to go with Ms. Raymond and then Ms. Oden.
Thank you. Excellent, again. I'm so excited by all the work you guys are doing, especially with the community connections. I just think that that's a huge piece and it's such a benefit for our students. I got, I lost my train of thought because we were talking about the restaurant, and my mother works at Monty Tech in Fitchburg, what's the real name? Monticent Regional Vocational Technical School.
Yep.
And they have the tea room. So if you ever have a Friday, it's wonderful to go down there and have a delicious lunch in the tea room. But at any rate, at the robot algebra, you had given me this, and I gave it to her, and they are super jealous about how beautiful your new brochure is. My mom was like, we need something like this. So I stole it back from her, so they can't steal it. So the one thing that I had a little post-it about was on your, when you were talking about your goals, you had said, working on a Power Scholars program for CTE for the middle school students. Is that something that you're working with the Y on for this summer or a different summer?
Absolutely. So I had been a member of the Kickstart program when it was first initiated, and so one of my goals was to sort of figure out a way to bring this back and partner with the Y. So we've been in meetings with the YMCA, I'd say, for the past month or so now, trying to create a program where during the morning session, the Power Scholars program would work on the academic piece, and then in the afternoon, we would have the CTE component. So we're finalizing what that's going to look like, but it's in the final stages right now.
Okay, are you still working on grants for that, for the program?
Yep.
Okay, I'll talk to you after. I have, my husband's company does grants for students. It has to be STEM, it has to be low-income or needy students, but the Salem office still has money.
Great. Thank you.
So, and I forget my other question. Oh, it was about the preschool. I'm sorry, I don't understand what you're asking for preschool.
Okay, so the preschool doesn't run in the summer, and it also doesn't do full-day preschool. So there's many options that we could look into to say, how could we generate more revenue for the preschool so that we could maybe use those funds to further support the director of the preschool? We'd really like to see her salary increased, but you supported that already. So now we're saying, how could we further support her? What ways can we look into it, generating some revenue to support her or the other initiatives we'd like to do in the preschool? So we just need some funds to help kind of do a reassessment of what the preschool has to offer and how we could generate revenue using the preschool.
So are you hiring that out, like having a consultant do an analysis, or?
It depends if it gets funded. Sorry, I don't mean to push that back. Really, you know, there's different ways to do that. You know, one simple way is just call around all the other preschools, see if we're charging a fee that's the same. You know, have we done that in a while? What increase would happen if we did a full-day preschool versus the half-days? Is there a need for a summer preschool? You know, we'd need to do some analysis around this, and it would cost additional funds just to sort of start that process.
Okay, thank you.
But I also wanted to respond to, you said building relationships with community, and that's really important. We included in our appendix F. So Perkins has been re-released, so we now are working under Perkins Five. There are a few changes, and that's what we gave you that page for, so you can see some of the changes. One of the big changes is there is an increased push for what's called work-based learning. So you can think of this as community outreach, internships, ELOs with the community.
Close, yeah.
Yep. So that's why we're asking you for a full-time work-based learning slash ELO internship coordinator, because currently, you know, Mike and I, all the teachers have to have advisory boards where they interface with the community, and we just haven't been able to get to those as frequently as we'd like to. We'd like to be out in the community, really liaisoning, being the face, speaking with business partners. And if we had a person, full-time, who could do that, we'd really be able to establish those community connections. The goal being, students can actually take our CTE classes as sophomores. The goal would be they would take classes, not as juniors and seniors, but as sophomores and juniors, and then their senior year, they would be embedded in a business or in a community internship, and then they could transition or have a viable pathway right into work, if that's the option that they choose, but at least they would have that option. And a full-time work-based learning coordinator would really help us do that.
Yep, especially as we continue to expand our industry partnerships. This year, we've really started to partner with, you know, a lot of local industries. And as that continues, we see, you know, they're looking for more internships, they're looking for other opportunities, and, you know, that's where we see the need.
Yeah, and it's just, and it's also mandated, that's what we're trying to show you. Perkins Five is really asking us, as a school district, if you have a CTE center, to work towards that goal. So we want to, we want to be on top of that.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Oden was next.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Greenow. Thank you. What a great presentation. For me, it's so exciting to see the CTE program just blossom in front of our eyes. I think it's good for the city, good for the school district, and good for lots of students, so, thank you. How many students are in the automotive program?
Oh, currently, we have two auto-two programs with approximately 18 students total. And then we have one auto-one program with, I think, approximately 20, am I close? You have that in your appendix. So it should be appendix number? Nine E.
Oh, okay.
That's how many requested it.
Thank you. Okay.
So 19 for level one, 19 for level two?
Yep, 19, and 19 and 19. And that does represent, it doesn't represent the work of our new teacher, right? So he's establishing his rapport and getting to know the students, so we anticipate we will be full next year. What's exciting about that actually is, Mike and I just learned that Governor Sununu put full tuition and travel and tuition reimbursement into his budget. So that's $8.6 million that he put into CTE. Because what has been happening is when student, other schools want to send their students to us, tuition and travel has not been fully funded by the state. Now they're asking for CTE tuition and travel to be fully funded. So what's exciting is we anticipate an increase in students coming into our programs because now school districts can fully access that funding. Additionally, we learned at SB 190, which is a task force to establish the vision for CTE, that CTE numbers had been going down, involvement across the state. They are no longer going down. So the shift is really happening. I think people are starting to recognize that CTE is a viable pathway for success. So that's really promising, I think. So the tuition and travel is really promising.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Also, I was going to say, I remember when we had one high school, we did have a restaurant run by the CTE program. I think it was called the Riverside Cafe. Teachers could go in there and have lunch. I know I went in there. I don't know if it was open to the public. For some reason, I think it was, but absolutely not sure. But we did have something like that at the one high school. And also, if I remember correctly, there was a time when construction technology used to build a house.
So let's do this first. So we, so we'd like to, so Culinary does offer lunches two days a week to staff and students, and that always sells out. It's very popular. It's difficult to open it to the public because Milford and Salem, so they were designed with outside doors that could be locked, so people could come into the restaurant but not access the school. And so one of the issues, you know, with the way that Nash was designed is that people would have to come in through security and they would have access, you know, fully to the school. There would, there would be no way to like prevent them from, you know, wandering the hall. So it is a little bit more difficult to fully open to the public, but that's why we went with that breakfast idea to continue generating options for students and faculty and staff.
You know, we'll continue to look for other options for Culinary to generate money and get out to the public.
Maybe talk about construction.
So construction trades, so construction trades, they haven't built the house in a while, but they are doing a lot of community projects for the Parks and Rec Department. They're building sheds and park benches, and so our teacher, Al Verly, is definitely making connections out there in the community. And I'm sure in the years to come, we can explore other opportunities.
And the nice thing about the Park and Rec's gig for our students is, he said unlimited, you know, as many as the students want to build, they'll buy. So, and so that generates income for them.
And the other important thing, I think, and I highlighted it earlier, is the integrated work of our teachers. So the greenhouse, you guys remember the greenhouse last year that was built? You know, that was an effort by our HVAC teacher, our construction trade teacher, and our electrical teacher, a food technology teacher. So it's great to see that interdisciplinary work.
I just want to say thank you, and your brochure is just so professional.
Thank you.
It just, boy, it makes us proud. And I also want to say, I went to the graduation of the preschool last year.
Yeah, I know.
And it was just fantastic, the work that went into that. I remember when my kids were in school and the grandkids, and what a great job they did. So thanks, and I think we're headed in the right direction.
Principal Richard went to that preschool.
Yes.
Yes, he did.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Oh, yes, more questions.
Ms. Porter?
Okay, I echo everything she said. I won't repeat. The work-based learning position, is that coming from Perkins? I guess I'm a little confused, because you said the $33,500 that you were asking for, everything else was coming from Perkins. Is that including that position?
So, yes. So we can cover the full-time work-based learning coordinator and the part-time. So to move the tech ed, so let me just reiterate, we have a part-time tech ed teacher at North, and we're asking to make him full-time by just bumping that. That's where that halftime tech ed comes in, and that would allow him to then teach Intro to CTE at South, so that, that opportunity for ELL students as well at North. Those can both come from Perkins, but the caveat is that can only happen for three years. So in an effort to be fully transparent, we can only cover those costs through Perkins for three years. And if we do cover this for three years, you know, Perkins does request the school district picks it up after that. So you're allowed, we would, I think the idea is we fully fund it the first year, the next year, we fund part of it, and we split it with the school district. So it's kind of an easing into versus just all at once.
Was that some sort of a formal arrangement?
It is.
Do we need to get signed off in the grant that that's what's going to happen?
Dan maybe knows more about that, but I do know that the federal government requires that if we fund a position for three years, afterwards, the school district must pick up the cost.
And we can only do it for three years.
Yeah.
So does that mean, okay, so are you, so we have to approve the hiring of this person through Perkins?
No, initially, when we hire them through Perkins, I think we would do the hire. No, it's not true, because we did it with Dana. Yeah, we have to approve the position. That's what we're asking you to do. Yep.
Okay, so we have to approve the position, knowing that it's going to impact not this year's budget, but future.
Yeah, yes, correct.
Uh huh. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, that's true.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any comments or questions?
Nothing, Ms. Timmons?
Actually.
Go ahead, Ms. Timmons.
Actually, I echo all of their sentiments, and I'm always impressed with you guys. You do a wonderful, wonderful job, and every time you come to do a presentation, I'm blown away. Absolutely. Thank you for doing all this.
Thank you.
And I was wondering, did you get all this energy, the time that you have to spend to get all these programs up and running?
Well, that's why we're asking for this full-time work-based learning ELO position, because it is, it's wonderful. I'm not going to speak for Mike.
It's great work.
But, but, you know, it is, all the things we're doing are starting to add up, especially, I think, the vertical alignment. That's something that has not been done before. I just want to stress that. Before Mike and I came onboard, no one was doing vertical alignment to work with those, the teachers, the fax teachers and the tech ed teachers down at the middle school level. And Perkins Five does now allow us also to spend some money at the middle school level. It allows us to spend all the way down to fifth grade.
And we want to continue this work. I mean, to see the looks on the middle school kids' faces during the virtual tours, they're, you know, looking at South up on the screen and going back and forth, you know. We just really want to continue those initiatives.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Ms. Porter, go ahead.
Okay, not to beat a dead horse. I just always like to know what I'm responsible for. So when does that position need to be approved? Like, do you have a grant deadline or something?
Yeah, so we will, we finish, we start writing the grant in March.
Other than, yeah.
Yeah, very soon. It needs to be done around April, the end of April. So all we would be asking you to do is just say, yes, we could move forward and put that in the grant.
So are you going to be coming to the board for a motion for that? Like, how does that work?
I, so Mike and I are new.
I told him so am I, so I'm.
So, so we haven't ever asked for this before. So, but we can work with Dan, because I think Dan's not new.
Right.
So he can help us, so. I didn't say you were old. So, so how about we will ask Dan what the correct process is?
Okay, so we don't have to do anything. You will come back to us and then we'll have to, okay.
Is that right? Yes, okay, that's.
Well, I want to make sure it doesn't get missed.
We don't want it to be slipping through the cracks either, because we will write it into the grant.
Absolutely.
And I don't know what the steps are.
But you can't submit the grant until you have approval for, is that how that works?
Well, we haven't always gone to the board every year. We submit, for new grants, we'll come to the board, but for the grants like Perkins and Title I and Title II, we don't always come to the board. We share with the board the grant that's put together by the grant managers. We could even have a, you know, part of a budget session if you wanted to talk about the process. But historically, we haven't, if we have, for example, five Title I teachers and they're just staying in the grant, we don't come back every year and say, oh, by the way, will you approve this? It's just sort of ongoing. I think that the technicality here for a new position.
Right.
We need to approve that so that HR is aware of it, you know.
Right.
And, but with, for Title I, for example, you could hire a person, and that person could stay on Title I indefinitely. Whereas Perkins is one of the different grants in that, here's the deal, they can cover them for up to three years. After that, you pretty much accept that you'll take it on your operating budget.
Otherwise, you're not in compliance with the grant.
You could get into some troubles, yes.
Okay.
So what, so what do we?
So what's happening?
Help us.
So on this position, I just heard Amanda say it's going, they want to put it into the grant, so then they would just get the position approved, which they could do. They don't necessarily have to go to the board to approve the position, though you are accepting something. So, I mean, we could maybe run it through finance and ops or something, but I think it would be part, it might be nice to say, okay, here's the grant this year. We could do that maybe at a finance.
I'm just thinking, in, you know, in three years, whoever is on the board at that time could look back and say, yes, this was approved.
Yes.
You know what I mean? So that there's not a problem with that down the road.
Yeah, so maybe we could do that as part of the operating budget. When you approve the operating budget, you could say, and we'll approve this position, with the understanding that three years from now.
That position will be in that budget. Okay. Because you don't want to have, you want to have that person be able to stay. You want it just like dot the i's and cross the t's so that there's no problem down the road.
And then when we come back to you with our goals, it will be so much longer, and we will have achieved so much more.
Yeah. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to, I just want to thank you very much for all your work. If any parents, middle school parents or high school parents are watching, and pick up one of these brochures, they're really excellent. They describe each of the programs, what career path you could go on, and, you know, whether you continue on to college or technical college, or, and I think it's really fantastic. So I would recommend that if any parent is out there watching right now, make sure you get one of these for your student. There are so many opportunities.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And I think, you know, Mike and I talk a lot about CTE and the vision and the mission, and, you know, there's this quote from Martin Luther King Jr., and he talks about, we must remember that intelligence is not enough. Intelligence plus character is the goal of true education. And I think what the CTE programs allow us to do is really embed character into our, into our education system. So just want to say that.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, very much.
Good job, super job. I love you guys. I love you guys.
Thank you. You made my Valentine's Day so nice. I have to say, I did have a date planned. It was worth it.
You have another person.
It was worth it. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Restaurant's not closed yet, so.
Take some treats with you.
Yes.
And next on our agenda is plant operations, and we have with us Mr. Sean Smith. I'm going to turn the floor over to Mr. Smith.
Okay, thank you, and good evening. When I first heard you were switching tonight, I gave Dan a lot of grief. I blamed him for everything.
He gave me a lot of grief.
I said, what am I going to do with all my girlfriends? No, it's just, it's tough enough. But, actually, it's my sister's 70th birthday today, so that's what I was missing, but that's okay. I'm still happy to be here. So, I don't have a PowerPoint presentation. I'm going to speak right from the paper that you have in front of you. And so, plant operations, I don't, I don't think I need to tell you what we do. We take care of all the schools and the grounds, both the maintenance, repair, and cleaning thereof. We, big focus, the last five or six years have been security. We also oversee the crossing guard program. We oversee the construction renovation programs, and we're heavy into, you know, trying to save money through utility savings. So, that's kind of what we do. Part of our goal is to provide a safe and comforting learning environment for all the students and the staff, and I think we do a pretty good job in that area. We have to meet all building codes. So, one of the issues we cooped up against this past year is trying to make some changes to help out the special education program, and we just can't go and make changes to buildings. You have to go to the, get a permit in office in many cases. When we did all the renovations at Brentwood, we had to, again, get permits to do the work, and some of that required us to hire an architect. So, it's just very important to remember that, you know, you just can't say, let's move a wall, because it's, I mean, moving the wall is actually the easy part, you know, just, it's getting there. Of course, the state is getting more and more involved in state accreditation, school accreditation, you know, as they go through their periodic inspections. And so, the budget I presented to tonight is to help us basically maintain. I'm not looking to approve very much. I asked Dan and Superintendent Mosley for a lot of stuff, but, you know, I recognize the budget environment, so try to make the best of it. So, the, I talked to various vendors before I put my budget together, and I talked to Harvey Construction quite a bit, and you're probably familiar with them. Asked them what they expected the increase to be over the next year and a half, because that's really the horizon we're looking at, and they were saying 7%. And that's construction stuff. A lot of our materials that we use for repair are construction materials, basically, so think electrical stuff, sheet rock, all those things. Did the same thing with some of our janitorial vendors, and we came up with a smaller number of 5%. So, my initial request, I put down 7% and 5%. And I think that totaled, correct me, Dan, it was about $100,000 in supply increases, and, you know, trying to provide a responsible budget, we knocked that down to $50,000. So, as long as you're aware of that. This current year, if you were on the board, I think most of you were on the board this past year, you might remember, we put in a very small increase request for this year. You know, it was well below the average, below the average for the school district. So, that's coming home to roost a little bit. I think we'll be okay overall, if you look across all the supply lines, but, for example, both our grounds and our electrical supplies, at mid-year, we're already down to 31%. So, again, I think we'll be okay, but, you know, that's just where we stand. So, on the budget sheet, I think that's Appendix 3B for you. It shows all the major operating lines in Roman numeral 3. Those are all the deltas, you know, the difference, the increases. Wages and whatnot are just for the new supervisors union. Contract services, I'll talk about in just a second here. So, the major impact there was, you might recall, we approved a three-year access control contract with Securide, and so that just reflects the increase there. The HVAC maintenance, that's about the 5%. Buildings and grounds maintenance, the biggest change there are in major repair lines. And so, this current fiscal year, of course, we moved the Brentwood program. We talked about that a little bit already. I think, Dan, we spent close to $40,000 when it was all said and done. That we do not budget for at all. So, we just, as a district, we made a conscious decision, okay, this is important, we have to move the program. But that took a number of projects that we planned to do and pushed them back another year. So, part of that increase reflects that. So, I'm just trying to catch up a little bit, but not the entire amount, so that I'm asking for 22, and, you know, we spent 40 anyway. And the rest of them are really small numbers. We actually took out money that we had set aside for the energy manager, because we'd been putting money in there for him to travel to a national conference, and we don't feel like we really need to do that any longer. Flipping the page, I'll be talking about janitorial equipment pretty soon. Janitorial supplies is the one area where I did, I said that the $12,000 represents 5%. I mentioned the ground supplies. That's the one line I did keep at 7%, because, as I said, we were down to 31% already. In past couple of budget years, I actually reduced that number myself, because I saw us not spending all the money, but, you know, it's coming back to roost. So, I'll skip down to Roman numeral 5. So, as you recall, a couple of years ago, we reduced 10 custodial positions district-wide. I asked for three to come back. We actually had it in the budget last year, but that didn't, ultimately didn't make our district cut this year. I would say to that, that it's really up to you on what your level of acceptance is for building cleanliness. If you're, if what you see satisfies you, then we're good, you know? But if you see things that you think could be done better, then this is an area where you could possibly increase it. I've also been along the, along the way, trying to purchase equipment that is, you know, people-power-saving. So, for example, we were buying write-on machines and that sort of thing. So, instead of walking behind a buffer, you know, they're actually riding it, and it saves a lot of time. So, that's one of the ways we've accommodated the cut. Number of years ago, we reduced an HVAC technician, and that was the person I primarily was hoping would take care of our preventive maintenance. That goes back a few, a number of years, probably before most of you that are on a board, and that's just something I was looking forward to get back. For improvement in where I stand now, I was to look for a master electrician and an equipment repair mechanic. Again, those were, didn't make the grade here. Talked about the $50,000 increase, we already talked about that. There was another 50 that I asked for that we didn't put in. So, janitorial equipment, we pretty much just budget for equipment that's dead or almost dead. So, it's at the end of its service life. In any event, many cases, we keep equipment beyond service life, but it does reach a point where we have to replace it. When we built, I mean, these two high schools seem brand-new to me, because I was involved in the construction of them, and we bought pretty much all new equipment. So, to me, it almost feels like we just bought it, but, you know, now it's 14, 15 years later, and stuff is breaking. So, that's why we have the increase in there. I talked about the contract-related increases, primarily the major repair lines. So, move to Roman numeral 6, which is the other budget, non-operating budget issues that we've had. As you recall, we've received $380,000 this current fiscal year, in addition to what we had for deferred maintenance, for issues like roof repairs, replacement, kind of an emergency replacement of the motor in our children unit at this high school, paving work, that sort of thing. We also received nearly $400,000 from the state in the public infrastructure grant. It was an 80-20 matching grant. That wasn't something we necessarily budgeted for, but we only had to provide 20%, so we kind of shuffled the deck with our deferred maintenance. Too good to pass by. Probably where the middle school projects, so the ultimate, have already taken the funds that were left over from Sunset Heights renovation, and add another 50 to that, and that should get us through this, this year. And then, of course, we had $100,000 in deferred maintenance in our budget. So, we're looking forward to in this coming fiscal year, the planned bonding for the middle school project. We've met with the mayor and various other people to discuss the impact of that. This FY '20, we're probably looking at design costs. Whether we build new or renovate, we still need to have the architect take a look at that. And there's some other soft costs associated with that, that, you know, might be consultants that do surveying and geotechnical testing and that sort of thing. And then, of course, our deferred maintenance will be. So, that's kind of the quick overview. If you go to Appendix C, that's, this is the spreadsheet I use every year. I've been using this probably for 20 years. It's served me well. I just shuffle the deck every year and still show you the last, past four years, plus the current request. Added a column this year, just to show the percentage of increase I was requesting. The, the one change in HVAC maintenance is we're at the, about the midlife repair point to do the generators. So, both high schools are emergency shelters for the city, and it's about $6,000 per generator to do this. We're just proposing to do one a year, and we would do the North High School this coming year, because that was, North was the first of the two high schools that was built. So, then, if you, on my, a bunch of papers here, I'm looking at the major repair page. It says major repairs, $5,000 to $50,000. So, the, these are the projects I'm proposing to do. It says FY '19 there, it's my mistake, I should say FY '20. These are all things we need to be doing. Hopefully, you can find it to, a way to fund all of those things. Again, we pushed a couple of those back from this past year. So, then I go to Appendix D, and that shows you the equipment that I'm looking to purchase, primarily custodial equipment. And you can see the things we're looking to replace, burnishers, scrubbers, that sort of thing. For grounds equipment, I'm really, I'm looking for a couple of things. We buy a couple of snow blowers every single year. That's just, every school has at least two of them. The high schools have four of them, if you figure out the math, and that's about how long the snow blower is expected to last. Our, we have two line painting machines, so that's all the athletic fields, whenever we do those. We have one on its last legs. And then, we have a sander that goes on the back of one of our one-ton trucks that is totally dead, and we just don't use it anymore. So, it's, those things are made out of metal. They say stainless steel, but, you know, salt's going to eat right through stainless steel, so it's not necessarily cracked up to be. I also, if you look at the next, flip the page, then I head down here, $9,000 for really trades equipment, but I didn't put that in the budget. Okay. So, I'm kind of zipping through this, so please interrupt if you have any questions. You can do it afterwards, too. Appendix E, earlier this month, Mr. Dunham and I went to the capital improvement committee in City Hall and gave this presentation. We're requesting this year $639,000 in deferred maintenance. You'll note that I, my next line, I'm on slide two of that PowerPoint presentation, it kind of summarizes everything. Comprehensive school facility renovation. So, that line really shows what we're planning over the next three years for Elm Street, where you have $100,000, forget that number, that's already been taken care of, but $4,000 for design costs. And so, these things are going through joint special, no real impact on this committee. We're also looking for funds for the paving, the roads and parking lots around this school. Not looking to totally start everything, that would cost too much money, so we're looking to at least maintain what we have, and then, over time, we can restore portions of it. It's part of a five-year plan. We do have a couple of energy projects that we're likely to get, and actually, Mr. Dunham and I are meeting with Dayford at the City Treasurer and the mayor, and I'm not sure what other cast of characters will be there next week, because this is a program that just, it just makes a lot of sense. It's budget-neutral. So, and the savings that we'll realize right away pay for the bond. And say it's a 20-year bond, we're going to pay this off easily within 15 years. So, then the last five years are totally gravy, but it doesn't cost the taxpayer anything. Sounds too good to be true, but that's, that's what we heard, at least.
It was a guarantee.
And that was a guarantee as well, yes. So, it's a performance contracting. This board approved the performance contracting contract earlier this, well, last year it was. And so, these are the results. They've done surveys of the two high schools, and those are the amounts that they're suggesting. They would do one school at a time over the next two fiscal years. Then, the last thing is the district-wide security improvements. I was asking for so much this coming year, I decided to give you a break, or give the city a break, and push back the security improvements for a year, because it looks like $6.5 million. It's not to say that there aren't improvements we could do right away, and there certainly are, but we addressed the most important of them this past year with the state grants. So, we think we're in a pretty good position. These would just enhance our security efforts. Happy to answer questions about that, that you might have. So, then Appendix F, it's titled NSD Construction Plan, FY 2020 to 2025. This gives you a year-by-year view over the next five or six years of what we'd be requesting. In the past, we've tried to keep it right to $600,000, but that's what we're using back in 2000. So, just inflation by itself kind of inflates that number, and we've never, rarely received anything even close to what we've asked for. So, all that does is defer things, right? And then, so, more things get broken, and then you ultimately end up doing a school renovation project, you know, for five or 10 million. It's one of those pay me now, or pay me later's, but I understand, you know, the budget constraints we're working under, too. So, that's really the first page and a half of just deferred maintenance. Comes to, the backlog right now is just over $7 million. Then, page three of that appendix looks at the school construction renovation program, kind of lays out the potential costs. We're looking at Elm Street, doing something between now and 2023, wrapping that up. Those presume that we're building a new facility, so if we're going to renovate, that would cost actually be spread over four years, and we wouldn't finish it until 2025. So, that's all between the joint special and City Hall and whatnot. But we did meet with the mayor again last month, earlier last month, I believe, and laid all this out for him. So, the city is well aware of what we'd like to do. After Elm Street, Main Dunstable, Burchill, Mount Pleasant, and some more, it doesn't have to be those orders. It's kind of the way I would propose we do it, just because of the conditions of the schools and complaints we might get. And then, and this doesn't even list all the schools. So, now, then you're going to be looking at New Searls and Dr. Crisp, bystanders. and Dr. Chris, by standing, it never ends. So it's just, I would say the city's been very supportive of us in this whole effort. It does cost a lot of money. Appendix H, so one of the programs the city has is a capital equipment reserve fund, and that pays primarily for vehicle replacement. So a number of years, we heard about this and put our hands up and said, can we be a part of that? And they said yes. So it took it out of the Board of Education budget, and the city now budgets for it, sets aside a certain amount of money every year, which is a really good thing. And we've been able to really keep our fleet up to date this current year. So it does not fund, like, drivers' ed vehicles go into my inventory, and we use them for supervisors driving around the city. So it's really at the drivers' ed program, which is a total different budget right now. I mean, that's something we don't, but the city still wanted us to list them on our list of vehicles. So this current fiscal year, we're doing the Ford Mini Star and a Ford cargo van. It says replacement years 2018 and 19, but they're both actually this year. And actually, I already have the quotes, I'll be sending that in pretty soon. You can see we have four more scheduled for next year. So the number tends to change as we get closer and closer to the budget, the mayor decides what he can actually afford to pay for. And if we list four, and if we get two or three, that's a good thing. Appendix I, this, these are the utility projections. The good news is our utility rates are staying the same. The natural gas rate is good until May of 2020, so basically all of next fiscal year. And then the electricity rate is good until November of 2020. Those are calendar year 2020s. So we're in good shape as far as that goes. This coming year, we'll start to look to extend those or get new quotes going forward. And the bottom line is, we're suggesting we maintain a flat budget on the utility lines for this coming year. We're doing pretty well this year, as far as that goes. Right, Mr. Donovan?
Yeah, year-to-date, the, actually, the electricity is running a little over budget, but the natural gas at this point is below budget. So in total, we're okay, but electricity is running higher.
And that concludes my presentations. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. I'm going to go to Mr. Mosher first. Do you have any questions or comments, Mr. Mosher?
I do have comments. I have been with the construction projects and the Joint Special for many, many years. And I have to compliment Sean on his performance over the, over the years, and trying to keep the expenses down, and also to move things around so that he accomplishes a lot. And I think he's doing a wonderful job with it. And I can sympathize with him, because as a former superintendent of the mechanical department for the B&amp;M, I had a tremendous shop there to oversee, and with the utilities and the labors and union things, and everything, it was really a big headache. So I can appreciate what he goes through, and I know he's doing a good job. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else have any questions, Mrs. Oden, and then Ms. Timmons?
Thank you. I have one strange question. Under custodial equipment, replace clocks, $15,000, and it's one clock. What kind of clock is that?
Okay, I'm just looking to catch up with you. So, yeah, it's actually, it's a misnomer, it's not custodial, it's trades equipment, replace clocks. That number has been in there for a while, I should probably change it. If we were to go into a school and replace all the clocks, and an automated system, that's our estimate of what that would cost. The reality is, we have automated clocks in a good number of schools already, so you have, you have a central clock, and they all change at a certain time. In many cases, we, a clock like that does die. We go in there and buy a simple battery-run clock and stick it on a wall. So it's, as you see, it's not something I'm looking to fund at this point. We're just not in a position of need in the coming year.
Okay. And going back to the request, you're requesting restoration of HVAC technician that was cut in fiscal year 2012. How many of those HVAC techs do we have now?
So we have one in each of the two high schools, and I have three district-wide.
Three district-wide, okay. And a new position of a master electrician, how many do we currently have?
We have two.
Two? And equipment repair mechanic, how many do we presently have?
We don't have any. Part of what that would entail, we probably have to have more discussion if you wanted to explore that, is there's a repair line under, you can see, Equipment Maintenance and Repairs. So we asked for $47,840. A large part of that is, we go to various vendors that actually have a repair capability, and they repair buffers, our burnishers, all those sorts of things. If we could bring that in-house, I think we'd save ourselves a fair amount of money. So I would probably take at least half of that and put that toward a new position. It would also benefit our grounds crew, we'd have better capability to maintain the equipment that we do have. The grounds people have a lot of equipment.
Okay. And I have one final one. You have the Public School Infrastructure Fund that will be funded by the state. It's been fairly, I'd say controversial at the board, and I'd like to ask either Superintendent Mosley or Mr. Donovan, have all the documents been signed so we can obtain reimbursement from the state?
As far as I know, we're still missing one signature.
And this is time-sensitive? We could miss it if it's not done by a certain date?
That is correct.
And it's, what, $400,000, 399?
The total's 499, but we've already received a number of them, so this is just four of them.
Okay, okay.
So that total's probably about, I don't know, about $50,000, maybe. I don't know exact amount, but...
Okay, so one board member has to sign four more. They've signed nine, and all they have to do is sign four more?
Yes. And then we'll have three left, one of which we're going to be doing the work in February vacation, and then one in the April vacation or summer. We've asked for an extension on those. And then there's one large one, where they gave us the grant for Mount Pleasant, but to do all the work at Mount Pleasant, it's $500,000. They gave us $100,000, so it's really not, so we're hoping to be able to move that to one of the high schools. We've requested that, and we're waiting a response.
Okay. Thank you. And if you could just keep us updated on the signature issue, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Can I ask a follow-up to that?
Sure.
If we lose out on this 80% reimbursement, this $50,000, what, what happens? Because this is work that we've done, and then there's the additional work on the other ones. Like, we would have to make up that money out of someplace else in our operating budget?
Yes, yes, for sure. Because we've already, these four projects, we've spent the money.
Okay.
So...
So $50,000 is like a social worker?
Sure.
Or two psychologists.
And... Ms. Timmons?
I have a follow-up to that question as well. One is, you said it was time-sensitive. How much time do we have for this board member to get down here and sign that document?
I'd have to check, but I believe it has to be, I think it's sometime in March. I'm not 100% sure, but it's, it's in the next four to six weeks, I believe, is...
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Timmons, you have some more questions?
Yes, I have one other question. We haven't signed a budget for the custodians yet, and I was wondering, Sean, is this FY '19 to '20 in that group, in anticipation, or what?
No, the increase you see there is just through the supervisors' union.
Oh, okay.
So that'd be another larger number. I don't know if Mr. Donovan has it estimated yet, but depends on the percentage increase we give them.
Yes, but that number's not in this. It's in a reserve account.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Raymond?
Thank you. I feel like the follow-up person today. So since the custodial contract is still being worked out, how I'm going to put it, I think it's, like, stalled for now. Do they still, do they maintain their current salary next year, or do they get whatever the last year's bump was?
They maintain the salary until there's a contract's been passed.
And then when we sign a new contract, they get the retro pay to back when it should have gone up?
It depends on what we negotiate with them.
Oh, it depends on negotiation. I just want to make sure that we have a budget that makes, takes account for that, so that we don't end up, you know, in six months down the road, having a budget problem.
Yeah, our next session with them is on March 22nd, I believe, and that's a more of a fact-finding meeting.
Okay, thank you.
But we do, we do have that reserve for it, it's just not...
It's not here, but you have it.
It's not in these salaries, but there is money put aside for negotiations.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Other, Mr., Dr. Mosley?
I would just like to make a...
I'm sorry, Dr. Mosley.
Dr. Mosley, and then Ms. Timmons. Go ahead.
Go, go.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Timmons.
I wanted to make one comment, and that comment is, our schools are really clean. I'm going in most of them, and they're extremely clean, and I want to thank your staff for such a good job doing that. That's a comment.
Go ahead, Dr. Mosley.
When the time is right, unrelated, thank you to everyone to the presentation. I just would like to make a quick comment on the budget in terms of, I'd say, really quick, just with the meeting Heather and I had with the mayor today.
Okay. All right. If, thank you very much, Mr. Smith. Very good presentation, very detailed. And so we have, we're at the bottom of our agenda. I did, did you want to go now, Dr. Mosley?
Just really quick, I don't want to get into the fine details, but I thought we had a really good, productive meeting with the mayor and Kim Kleiner. I wanted to publicly thank them for all their support that they've bestowed on the schools. I would, and, you know, I think it's already been mentioned here before, but I really think the mayor should come down and talk to the board. I'd recommend it, ultimately, it's the board, to talk and talk about the budget and some things that are, some positive things and some challenges. I appreciated the historical perspective. I know Mayor Johnson has been mayor before, and I just found it to be very, very helpful. So we're certainly going to coordinate that. I know we've already agreed on it, but I just wanted to say thank you to the mayor and Kim for coming down and giving us some feedback.
Thank you, Dr. Mosley. So we are at the end of our agenda. We do have, I did promise public comments if Mr. Markku, Ms. Markku is all set. So unless we have any other business, Ms. Oden?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
On the, on the motion to adjourn, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Grino votes yes. Motion carries. We are adjourned at 8:21. Thank you, Mr. Mosher.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Oh, yes. Got a chance to spend the rest of the night with my 50-year valentine.
Okay, all right. Have a good night.